Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
Meeting on April 16th, 2020 at approximately 6:30. We are again meeting by Zoom and in separate locations. We will follow the same procedures that we have been for the last three weeks. That all votes will be taken by roll call. I think the big news for today, for those of you who've been paying attention to news, and for some, I suppose that's all we have time to do is watch the news. But the governor announced today at 2 o'clock in his, an hour earlier than some of his other news conferences, that in fact, remote learning will continue for the rest of this school year for both public and private schools. When he was asked what he meant until the end of the year, he said, that's really up to the local school district. They all have different closing times, so the local district will decide that. Some we know have canceled vacations so that they can get out a little earlier. Fall Mountain's vacation, if I'm correct, begins, our school district begins next week. So there is an April break from the 20th to the 24th is what I recall. As for the other things that are going to open, that's for us to guess and wait until other announcements are made. The governor says he is working on those kinds of things. Some of the states near us, Massachusetts, New York, Connecticut, Rhode Island, they're all going to agree, have an opening that will be by agreement among all of them so that they're all in this, doing the same, same thing. Well, I just lost you. Oh, I lost, I have lost my agenda, but I can see all of you. I just don't have the agenda. There it is, came back. So let's begin then, if we could please, with the accounts payable. Steve, you want to take that?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the accounts payable check register in the amount of $749,492.63 for checks issued for 17, 2020.
Second. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this accounts payable? It includes our Fall Mountain monthly payment, by the way, of $615,232. Hearing no questions or comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please speak by saying aye. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Peggy? Aye. Vote positively as well, so that accounts payable are approved. How about going on to payroll, Steve?
I make a motion to accept the payroll register totaling $24,737.13 for checks dated for 17, 2020, and the $941 payroll tax transfer of $4,971.61.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions about any of these things that were on the payroll? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And my vote is yes as well, so that's a unanimous acceptance for the payroll register. How about select board meeting minutes for April 9th?
I make a motion to accept the select board minutes of April 9th, 2020.
Second.
Are there any questions or any discussion about those meetings minutes? Hearing none, Steve, the vote?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well, which means the minutes are approved for April 9th, 2020. Committee?
I'd like to recognize the following reports. North Wallpole Village Commissioners Meeting of February 25th, 2020. North Wallpole Village Commissioners Meeting Minutes of March 3rd, 2020. North Wallpole Village Commissioners Meeting Minutes of March 10th, 2020. And the North Wallpole Village Commissioners Meeting Minutes of March 17th, 2020. And the North Wallpole Village Commissioners have not met since then.
They have been, they have suspended all their meetings until further notice. Let's move on to current use applications, please.
Sarah, can you put up the current use? Or, got it. Okay, I make a motion to accept the current use application for map 3, lot 12, sub lot 3.
That's for a 31.89 acre parcel, which is off March.
Hill Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions about this or any comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Therefore, the current use application for map and lot 3123 is accepted.
I make a motion to accept the certification of yield tax for map 12, lot 44, sub lot 500, in the amount of $3,444.40.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about it? Hearing none, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Peggy? Aye. That means that we have approved the certification of the yield tax assessed for 1244500.
I make a motion to accept the yield tax for map 8, lot 118, sub lot 2, in the amount of $829.28.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I also vote yes, which approves map and lot 811802.
I make a motion to accept the yield tax for map 5, lot 11, sub lot 2, amount of $619.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Peggy? Aye. That is, map and lot 51102 is approved.
I make a motion to accept the yield tax for a 9, for map 9, lot 6, sub lot 0, in the amount of $185.78.
Cheryl, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Are there any questions or comments about this particular map and lot? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye, therefore approving map and lot 9, map 9, lot 6 for that tax yield. Let's move on to excavations, please.
I make a motion to accept excavation intent for renewal. It's maps 1, lot 16, sub lot 2 for renewal to excavate over 1,000 cubic yards of material.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions about this? This is simply a renewal of something we have approved before in the past. Are there any questions about it? If not, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye, approving the renewal for map and lot 116, sub lot 2. Let's go to old business.
Did you on the prior, oh Peggy, on the prior for the timber tax warrant, did you do the original warrant yield tax levy? That's another form.
Okay.
That's actually the warrant.
We'll go back to it then. Steve, if you'll read that.
I make a motion to accept the warrant yield tax levy for a combined total of $5,088.46.
Second.
Any questions or comments about it? Because this is a separate form, I take it, that has to be signed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Sarah?
It does, yes. Yes.
All right, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye, therefore approving the original warrant for the yield tax levy. Let's go then to old business. The broadband committee is first on the agenda. We met this week by Zoom. We have a new contract that came in just as the meeting was called to order. So we are going to meet again next Wednesday. The contract looks pretty much the same. It made a couple of corrections that we, as a committee, had asked for. So I hope next week, after we have approved the new contract as a committee, and it meets what we feel are our needs as the town, we will be sending you a contract for you to read and for you to approve. The last time attorney Hawkins Smith saw the contract, he said unless there were any significant changes, and I don't believe there are in what I've read, then he didn't feel he had to review it again, that it was approved. And there are not significant changes that have been made in it. The biggest factor, I think, is that it, on a separate document, states the order of all payments. And that, the committee is looking at very closely as well. The debate being whether we ask them to do, to base all their payments on the deficits or on the, another, which states the same amount of balance, excuse me, every year. So we'll be examining all of those things on Tuesday night. If you want to be part of that committee, you certainly could be to listen to that discussion. At any rate, we're getting very close to having a contract, which is good because Rich Kreisel, who has been working steadily on the bond bank application, has it nearly finished. And it's not due until the 8th, but you need to see that application as well. And we have to have the contract finished before that time as well, so that our bond bank attorney has copies of both of them. The application, as I think I've told you before, is extraordinarily detailed. We have had the help of Jim Fenn filling part of it out for information they need about the schools. We have had Sandy working on it very hard to fill in all the details about past tax levies that we have had, what the rate of return is on our taxes, all kinds of detailed questions. So I will be able to sell it that to you, I think, by next week, so that you can see it. Do you have any questions about what we're doing at this point?
No.
Does anybody have a feel for which way the bond market's going to go in June?
No, that's something we're following. In some states, it's been closed. At this, we don't have any signals that are, the New Hampshire Bond Bank will be closed. But what the attorneys, of course, are all telling us, and in fact, one of our own committee members, who is very active in the county and works with bond banks all the time, that should the bond bank in New Hampshire not be available to us, there are numerous banks with whom we can in fact, take this bond and who will willingly give us the money for a 20-year bond. So we'll see. It's certainly of concern, of course. Everybody's watching it because there are six towns all going to the bond bank with similar contracts. In fact, it is our contract that's probably serving as a model for several of the other towns here in, in the state. At least that's what we are, are being told. On the 22nd, actually, of April, Dennis Markham, who is our local contact with CCI as our construction manager, is meeting with one of the construction directors and engineers of CCI, and he is going to be taking a tour of the town, including North Wallpole, for where their splitter boxes will be put. And that's the box from which all connections to the houses start. And I think Cheryl, I sent you forward, did you some information today about that because Dennis wanted to know if you would like to drive in your own car. Each person who comes to this session on Wednesday will be in a separate car. They're not meeting as a group. To look at the locations in town, both Wallpole and North Wallpole, which have been selected for these splitter boxes. They're about the size of a dorm refrigerator.
I have actually asked Pat Canary, the chairman of the North Wallpole Village Commissioners, if he would be interested in doing that. And he said that he would, so I put him in touch with Dennis.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Because somebody who knows North Wallpole needs to be with that, that group, since four of these splitter boxes will be going in North Wallpole.
Yeah, he's, he's way more familiar with, so I thought it would be good for the commissioners to have some input into that.
That's great. Thank you very much for taking care of that. I'm sure Dennis is very appreciative.
Yeah, he already sent me a thank you note.
Good, good. Next, if there isn't anything else to ask about this, we'll go on to the next. How about the North Street drainage plans, which we have seen? We got some pictures, invoice and plans, and a copy of a proposed easement, all from Mike Row today. Have any of you had an opportunity to look at them?
Yeah, I looked at them, they look reasonable.
Yeah, they look reasonable, but this dry well is going to be on, is it, is this the one going on the Stevens property?
Correct.
And so if Mr. Stevens has someone else looking at it, is this something that, or is that something different?
No, I've talked with him again. That engineer whom, with whom he met today, looked over these plans because I took them up there, not knowing there was anyone else involved. He happens to know Mike. He had no comments about our plans. The only thing that I got back late this afternoon from Mr. Stevens were questions that I think that are questions that can be answered easily. He wanted to know if there would be, area would be cleaned up. And I think we can safely say, yes, it will be after they've done their work. They will clean up both the north roadside, where they're going to be putting in another catch basin that will be close to the Stevens property, but it will be on North Street. And they will certainly clean up the area within Mr. Stevens' property as well. He also asked the question whether there would, it would be able to have grass growing over the cover of the drywall. And I really will have to ask Mike Row that because I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, they want to keep that cover open. It's a grate, so they can easily pick it up and clean it out.
But they can have grass growing up to that?
Up to it, right, but not on top of it.
Thank you, good, that's great. And we will see that this easement is, has all the appropriate information in it, so we can give it back to him. If we're willing to go along with this, this, as we presented it to him today, and you've seen all those documents, he certainly is willing to sign the drainage easement.
I got a, what, the easement is a cut and paste directly from the manual?
Yes.
Does that need to go through Hawkins Smith to update the deed?
No, what it does is it goes, the town then has to record it with the deed.
With the deed, okay.
So that's fairly simple. We will be handling that. And we will obviously take this document and put in the right information.
Yep, and on our own letterhead, so that'd be good.
Letter, absolutely. Are there any other comments about that? Do we want to have a motion to approve this?
I move to approve the North Street drainage plans as submitted by Mike Row.
Second.
Are there any other questions or comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Peggy? Yes, I approve it as well. I will talk with Mr. Stevens tomorrow and tell him that we'll get this easement prepared for him for next week. And I'll let Mike know that we have, or you can Cheryl, that we have in fact, approved these plans.
I'll notify him.
Okay, thank you very much. That's great. And the next item is the ZBA letter that we have been asked to write to Tiffy Mart regarding their signage. I'm reluctant. I said last week I'd write that letter, but I'm, after doing the research that I have of the ordinances and the letter, when there was a piece, as we've all stated, some of the ordinance was obviously in parentheses, some of it was not. And as Steve and I have been reading all the old documents of ordinances, that particular line that starts with oscillating, isn't included in some of the sets that we've been reading. It's in the current one that's online, but the earlier ones, in the last two or three years, have left that out. And Steve didn't find it in an earlier set, 2010. So I'm suggesting that we write the zoning board, and I want some discussion about this, and ask them to, in fact, write a new ordinance if this type of sign troubles them. I think they need to be more specific about it. It is a temporary sign. It's hard to tell exactly how far it is from the, I guess it has to be measured from the edge of the road, rather than the center of the road. There are some ordinances that deal with that, but not with temporary signs. And I would be more comfortable writing to someone, because there are other places in town who use these flags periodically, if we had something that was more definitive as an ordinance that dealt with temporary flags.
Yeah, it depends, you know, if you take a hard line to the ordinance, somebody displaying an open flag on their building would be in violation.
Yes.
And that's the problem. All right, it's a temporary sign. And if you say it has to be 60 foot away from the sign, then it's somewhat of a problem. Also, that the oscillating only applies to residential communities. It does not apply to the commercial district as written in the ordinance. So it just needs to be cleaned up if that's going to be the case, because there'd be so many violations in town that it'd be crazy.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree.
So I will write a letter for your approval, and I'll see that you get it in time for next week's meeting, all right?
Okay.
I've been talking to several zoning people about this, so some of them won't be surprised. Some of them will be. Sewer easements, Steve, do you want to speak to those?
Yeah, I can. It's been a long, tough battle for Mr. Smith's, getting sewer easement in place, but we finally got all the legal documents that we need now. And now I've asked Jody and Sarah to go get the signatures that are needed, but it was, it's a long, complicated set of easements.
Yes, I read all those documents.
Yeah.
That was very complicated, far more complicated than I would have anticipated.
Right, and one deals with the sewer line, and the other deals with the property.
Yes, right.
So it got a little complicated. But once it's done, Mr. Smith will be able to connect, and we will be able to expand our sewer line as needed through that district.
Down Huntington Lane?
Yes.
Good.
And that goes all the way back behind Caserta's place and comes back out again. So it gives us a lot of room for expansion of that area.
Good, that's, that's very positive.
Yes.
So there's nothing for us to approve at this point, is there?
No, except that I'd like to make a motion that we'll accept the easements as presented.
All right.
Second.
Are there any other questions or comments about this?
Sarah, you're going to start moving out with the signatures?
Yes, we'll start moving out with those. Just needed to make sure the select board was in agreement with the text.
Yeah, okay. Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. I've just lost the, it's my turn to have trouble this week, Steve. I've lost the agenda, but I do have it in front of me anyway. I'll vote yes, and so that means that we have a unanimous decision on the easements for the sewer easements on Huntington Lane. The next item, which I hope you can get up on the screen, is the town closure notice.
Yes.
Okay, good, because I, I can't, but I, I know what it's all about. So we want to approve the updated ordinances, or not an ordinance, but the closure update that we had, had talked about last week. Is there a motion to approve these changes?
I move to approve the town closure notice update and changes to that in the Wickham Rec area.
So I have a, just a quick question?
Yeah, yes.
All right, maybe I can't see.
If you'd second it first, then we can go to those questions.
Second.
Thank you. Now, what kind of questions do we have?
I'm wondering why we, so the other areas are not closed. Is that what we're saying?
Well, that's what we decided last week.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's, I got the wording in my head. So only the Wickham area is completely closed. The other ones, we just don't want people to congregate on.
Correct. If we find out that people are congregating, we always have the opportunity to close them. Now, and I want to bring up, just before we vote on this, well, well, let's vote on it, and then I'll tell you my question. Are you, so we have, we've moved and seconded that we update the town closure notice. I'm going to call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well, so we are updating that. That passes. Now, my question about enforcement. I have been hearing this week from various people that the recreation parking lot, which we're working on to make ours, has a lot of cars in it some days, others maybe one or two. I noticed that the school entrance to their parking lot has cones to prevent people from driving in. And I'm wondering if we should do the same thing with our small parking area there for the recreation area?
It's not stopping people from driving into the school.
Is that right?
No, I can tell you, on any given day, there's five to eight cars down there.
So they're just going in around the cones?
They go around the cones, yeah. But, you know, the, there is a gate up or something across, a chain across the staircase there.
Well, that's good, but people can walk around that, obviously.
Yeah, I said, I don't know, I don't know who's down there exactly, but I would say, you know, the cones are fine, but it's not going to stop people if they want to go down there.
Then I'm going to suggest to the police that we follow the AG's guidelines.
Yeah.
Enforcement, which are first to sort of remind people that they are not to be down there, to warn them, if you will, and ask them not to be down there again. If they persist, particularly if it's the same people over and over again, the police then have the right, because the AG's office considers it a misdemeanor if you are not following an enforcement ruling. And they could in fact, give them a citation. I don't think police are going to.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, Peggy.
I'll have that discussion with the police department.
But I mean, the congregating issue should be enforced all through the town.
Absolutely, it should.
Yep.
Question. Okay, I'm, I don't, since I don't see the agenda up, I can't, can't anymore. I'm going to, under the, I just mentioned the Rec area parking lot, we're still working on, on that, but Hawkins Smith is looking for a survey potentially. The next item that has pending further action, the school flashing sign. Yesterday, for the first time in three weeks, for three and a half weeks, I went out in the car, I went up to North Hill School, because I wanted to see what was up there. And I And I discovered on Main Street, as you drive down Main Street toward the, to turn right to go up to the school, there is a marker that says 20 miles an hour. It is a flashing marker. It indicates that it's a school district. I went on up, passed that, up to the school, back down again. And then I turned right and went up Main Street, turned around and came back and saw the same sign that is flashing when school is in session. It says it's 20 miles an hour. It asks people to slow down. So I am befuddled as what we're being asked for.
I think it's going up the hill when school's not in session. This is the response I got from Celeste. It says it's up on the hill by the school. I says, I believe there's a sign posted on the telephone pole as you come down the second hill by Taylor Street. I think it says 25 miles. Still way too fast when children are out riding their bikes. It says, we almonds would allow a speed limit sign in our yard if need be. And then they indicate there's one particular vehicle up there that speeds up and down the hill.
Well, if they could identify it and tell the police, I'm sure that they could get some help that way. So the almonds are actually, live on the front side of the school, don't they?
Correct.
Yeah, right on the corner.
So is this on the backside of the school that they're speaking about where you come down that sharp sort of curb and hill? Or they want it on their road?
They want it on their road. It says they come up the hill, people are coming up the hill really fast. And so if kids are out there playing in that area as it start to flatten out a little bit by the school, I don't think that there's a sign there. And I think that's what they're looking to see if there's, can be a reminder sign that they have to, you know, they have to slow down in that area.
Is it a flashing sign they're looking for or just a static sign?
It says, let's see. I think just a speed limit sign in their yard. They're looking for one. I thought the other request from her said a flashing, but.
Yeah, that's what's in the agenda. It says flashing sign, which I thought we talked about.
So too. Okay, well, I'll go back to the fellows again.
I think would be interesting, Peggy, is to see if somebody can come up with the cost for these solar powered signs for flashing, for speed limit. They have one over by Bellows Falls that I pass every once in a while. And it's pretty good.
Okay.
And maybe let's look at the cost of those things and maybe that's better than these static signs.
Yeah, it would be, I would think.
You know, maybe we can figure it out.
Yeah, and her original request was for either a flashing speed limit sign or another type of sign to have people slow down when they come up to the school hill and there are kids outside.
Yeah.
Somebody can speed up that hill. I guess I couldn't. So I couldn't believe people would speed up that hill. They must go. All right, I'll follow up again. All right?
Thank you.
But that's clearer than anything I think I've heard in the past. How about anything on road paving or, and certainly I haven't done the next one.
I did make the request to Mike for those things and I will follow up with him. I haven't seen the list yet. But he said he would have it to me this week, so I can follow up on that.
All right, thank you. Are there any other pending actions that we need to speak about at this point? Hearing none, is there any other old business that we've forgotten? If not, we'll go on to new business. And we had a tax, the notice that was sent to all tax collectors. Is this something you have for us, Sarah, to put up?
Yes, I think I can put it up. Let me see if I can find it here.
I won't be able to see it, but I don't know what happened to you all.
Can you see it?
Did you, can you check your video button at the bottom, Peggy, on the bottom left?
No, I don't have that. You see, I just have the Zoom thing in front of me with nothing else. And the video camera is to the right and all it does is pops up with somebody wanting to answer my questions and I have no idea even what to ask them. So.
Can the others see the notice?
Oh, yeah, we can see it. Yeah.
You all, can you all comment on it?
I think we've seen this before. This is just standard document from the state.
That's right. I think we've all seen it before.
It says that we've sent out the final mail, the final tax bill on November 21st, 2019.
Right. And Sandy had already taken care of whatever else they asked for.
Right.
It was already handled. So now what I'm.
To sign this, do we, Sarah?
There's no signature by the board. She takes care of it.
All right.
Right. She just certifies that there was no supplemental tax warrants. And then she hit her deadlines, right? She hit the deadlines for the required reporting.
Reports, right. It's all okay.
I'm going back and try to.
I think it's just procedural.
Okay?
Yes.
That's really all the new business that we have tonight unless some of the rest of you have something to come up.
I make them up.
I think, well, can I just say one thing, Steve? On, under new business, were we going to talk about deed waivers?
No, they should be done in non-public.
It needed to go to non-public, Cheryl.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with going. So I second going into non-public.
Okay, then we will go into non-public and we will be leaving our videotaping by Fact TV. And thank you, Alex.